We need to pick a call.
Okay.
I know. sir, please take the floor.
Heavenly Father, thank you so much for the opportunity to be here. Thank you for all the people you've assembled. I pray, Lord, that you would give us wisdom, that you would send your Spirit of truth amongst all of us and just reveal all the things that we need to do to bless this community, to bless these people and this government. And I pray that you would give us continued wisdom as we go forward on every topic and we ask these things in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Tyler. Well said. We call this meeting to order, the April 8th Monroe City Council. I need the record to reflect that almost half of the folks are absent, but we do have a quorum. We have Lee's out of town, Greg's out of town, Logan is on the phone. Did we get Lee in? Lee, you on the phone?
I am.
Okay, thank you. And Julie is out of the country. So slim crew, but still pretty powerful. I need a motion for the approval of the agenda, please. Thank you, Ms. Crawford. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to the approval of the consent agenda, this is council minutes from January 30th and February 4th, February 11th, February 20th, March 11th, and then HPC of February 25th, Downtown Development, January 9th, February 13th, Convention and Visitors Bureau, January 9th and 13th as well. I need a motion for the approval of the consent agenda, please. Thank you, Ms. Crawford. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to our public presentation, we have an Eagle Scout. Tommy Butler, would you come forward, please?
This afternoon's Eagle Scout proclamation from the city of Monroe, Georgia, where is Tommy Butler, I did not frame this, by the way, where is Tommy Butler, a senior at Walnut Grove High School, has demonstrated extraordinary leadership, dedication, and commitment to excellence in his pursuit of becoming an Eagle Scout, the highest rank in the Boy Scouts of America, and whereas Tommy has earned the respect and admiration of his peers, mentors, and the entire community through his unwavering perseverance, service, and contributions to both scouting and his local area, whereas Tommy's journey to Eagle Scout has not only enriched his own life, but has also inspired others to follow in his footsteps, exemplifying the values of leadership, community service, and integrity that are the cornerstone of the Boy Scouts of America, whereas Tommy Butler's accomplishments reflect the highest ideals of scouting and will continue to influence his community and those around him for years to come. Therefore, I, John S. Howard, Mayor of the city of Monroe, do hereby proclaim and celebrate Tommy Butler for achieving the rank of Eagle Scout, recognizing his outstanding achievements, his dedication to service, and his bright future ahead. Congratulations, Tommy, for your commitment to excellence and the principles of the Boy Scouts. May you continue to lead with honor and inspire others to make a difference in the world and witness whereof I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the state of Georgia to be affixed this 8th day of April 2025. So we did this one last week. And thank you so much. And before coming up to get this, anybody have any questions to Tommy? Put him on the spot. What grade? Where does he go to school? Okay, what about this? Tell us about your project.
So I, at my first Methodist church in Monroe, I took all of the, we cleaned up all the mulch and then we put down some new, that landscaping, like tarp thing, and then we put new mulch on the playground. We covered it all up. And then we painted two doors that are outside the church that had been just decaying.
Right.
Yeah. We repainted two of those doors and then that was.
Well, our Eagle Scouts have definitely, all of our churches have had Eagle Scouts do a lot of projects there. So I appreciate what you've done for the Methodist Church and thank you for coming in. I didn't frame it. And do I have any other Eagle Scouts in the room? James? It's okay to say yes when I ask. And it's a big deal, especially in today's, today's time where we have no focus or attention span more than 10 seconds for him to do that. That's taken years. Congratulations. Now, I'm going to move to public comments, but before we do that, I'm going to tell you all, you may leave. You don't really have to sit here through this. Unless you want, and if you do, have a seat. Thank you all. We have two people signed up for public comments, Ms. Susan Hawkins. Okay, thank you. And you want to talk about a name, road name change?
Yes.
Okay.
My name is Johnny Brent. I don't live in Monroe, but my wife is from here and her whole family is from here. I stopped to congratulate the young man leaving because to me, what he's done is really something that is dear to me and I think is a significant accomplishment. I made Eagle Scout in 1968.
Congratulations.
And what I'm here for is my father-in-law, Reverend, I don't know, some of you might remember him, some of you might not, Reverend Alvin Jackson White, lived at 557 Green Street. Prior to that, he lived on Perry Street. My father-in-law and my mother-in-law, they built a house on, at 557 Green Street in 1964, and they raised five children in that home. And during his time living and working here in Monroe, he worked in the mill and several other places, but he was the pastor of Triumph, the church and kingdom of God and Christ. But he also organized one of the first African-American ministers associations here. And through their work, they supported the old Carver High School activities. And he served as counsel and mentor to a lot of young men and his wife to a lot of young women in this community. And in my association with them, I married his daughter, Mary, in 1976 at Fort Seal, Oklahoma. I met her at Fort Valley State College. We have, we have a scholarship at Fort Valley State in the name of Reverend White and his wife to honor them. But because that area and Monroe was so, meant so much to him, and he did so much to try to help the community and help people grow. Like I say, I don't know if any of you are old enough to know him. Maybe some of your parents might. But that area, I think that's between Mayfield Drive and Carver Drive where his house sits. We're trying to maintain that area. The, the home will never leave the family. As a matter of fact, my son, he's be 43 years old next Friday, him and his wife and two kids live in the home. And we wanted to try to name if it's, if that street in his honor, if it's not the whole street, at least that, that block where his home sits. We want to keep his legacy going. The, like I said, the home site will never leave our family. And as a matter of fact, I have restored his old car and everything to put back over there. And that's what I'm here for, to find out what can I do to try to honor my father-in-law.
And what, and what is that address?
557 Green Street.
How many neighbors you have?
Across the, there's none on the same side of the street in that block that he lives on. His house is the only one there. Across the street, there's a couple of, there's two duplexes and I think two other houses going up toward the corner.
Okay. We'll look in, look into it. I'm going to, I'll get with Logan. David, did you have any legal?
I was just wondering, does anybody know what Green Street was named after? I don't.
I don't.
I don't know if that has any real historical significance or not, so.
I'm, I'm willing to research it.
That would, that would be good if you did. Also, I didn't know about this scholarship at Fort Valley State.
Yes.
That's one of the things that really needs to be, you know, advertised in this community.
We put it out to, to, my sister-in-law put it out to some, to the school, to Monroe Area High School this past year, that we had a scholarship there at Fort Valley State.
Well, if you'll take one of my cards, get in touch with me about it, because I'm very interested in that. My wife is originally from Fort Valley. And when she worked with the public school system here, she did a special programs thing. They took kids down to Fort Valley State during the summer because of the agricultural programs and the animal husbandry programs and all.
Garen Walker was student body president there?
No.
The name of Reverend Alvin Jackson White and Mother Irene White there. So that's, that's all I had.
Mr. Brent, I really like the idea. You two stay in touch. We'll look into it on our side.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Thank you for coming in. Ms. Hawkins?
Thank you for allowing me to speak today.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm very uncomfortable doing this. I want you to know.
That's quite all right. We're, we're pretty easy.
I wanted to, according to the thing, this is supposed to be the time to express your opinions and so forth.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I have some pretty strong opinions and I'm not sure you'll want to hear them, but I feel like I need to get it out.
Yes, ma'am.
Frankly, I am outraged at the increases in the rate of the water and electricity. Over 80% increase in the water. I didn't calculate the increase in electricity. Water and electricity are necessities. They're not luxuries. I cannot survive without them. The irony is this price gouging rates on water is that I choose to buy water for drinking and cooking because the taste of the city water is so bad. Sometimes it even smells bad and it is discolored slightly. So to add insult to injury, I'm almost doubling the cost just for water. On the electric side, I have stopped using central heat and air, unplugged the stove. I use a small little burner when I cook. The lights are off about 99% of the time. I use a refrigerator, a pot plate, very seldom, but I use it. And the TV is on. Occasionally, the lights are on, but they're off about 99% of the time. When temperatures plummeted into the teens and twenties and low thirties, I used a little miniature heater that I bought for less than a week in total. I'd also bought last year a little portable air conditioner that I use just to cool off the spot where I am and, and at night particularly so I can fall asleep. In other words, I believe I've done everything I can to possibly lower my cost, only to receive a bill that's double what it should be. By the way, I realized that this council, I just realized this when I was writing this up and reading this, it's just for the city only. I live outside the city limits. I have no representation for any voting, any cost increases, no representation. Isn't that what the Boston Tea Party was all about? Taxation without representation? So instead of just griping, I propose a solution. Turn your rate structure upside down. Let your corporate businesses, the big box stores mostly, pay the most instead of the least. And I mean double theirs. On the public side, try a scale based on income. For instance, most of you probably make over $100,000 a year. So this rate increase is nothing to you. It's like the tip at, at a, on a meal at a restaurant. However, when you're on a fixed income, that, that itself is low. It's devastating. So, this, this sliding scale thing on the income, like over $100,000 a year, you get the highest rate. You won't miss it, but I, but you won't. 75 to 100,000, a bit lower, just a little lower. 75, 50 to 75,000, average. 25 to 50,000, about 20% less than the previous, maybe 25% less. But below 25,000, 50% less. After all, you that get so much more income, a lot of you got that income on the backs of people like me. And I mean that literally on my backs. Oh, I gave out of words. But anyway, thank you for your consideration and I, I'm just at a loss. I'm sorry. I tend to get emotional and everything, but you cannot imagine the frustration. It's like everybody.
Right.
All at once. It's just, it's like vultures flying around trying to get your last red scent. It's like the older people, particularly in low-income people, we've become disenfranchised. We don't have the ordinary rights of citizens, of people with money. And that's what this country is about right now. You got to be rich. If you're not rich, you have no value except to be plundered, what little bit you have. And I know I'm so frustrated, but there is a solution. You don't like it, you don't want it because you're business. But think about people. Become, instead of becoming Robin, R-O-B-B-I-N-G, Hoods, H-O-O-D-S, try to become Robin, R-O-B-I-N-H-O-O-D-S. Robin Hoods gives to the poor. Thank you.
Thank you for coming in. And before you go, Mr. Middlebrooks isn't here. We have a, we, no, but we have a research where we go in and find out the electric usage.
It's on the bill.
No, no, no. The, the, an energy audit, we could do an energy audit. It might be able to save you some, some of the money.
Last year, year before last, when it jumped way up for no reason, I came and complained and they came out and looked at the meter and said, yes, running. See, I live in apartment.
Right. But I, but I think, I don't know what, what the energy audit all entails. Do you bet? Okay.
Thank you.
And do I have any other Eagle Scouts in the room? James? It's okay to say yes when I ask. And it's, and it's a big deal, especially in today's, today's time where we have no focus or attention span more than 10 seconds for him to do that. That's taken years. Congratulations. Now, I'm going to move to public comments, but before we do that, I'm going to tell you all, you may leave. You don't really have to sit here through this. Unless you want, and if you do, have a seat. Thank you all. We have two people signed up for public comments, Ms. Susan Hawkins. Okay, thank you. And you want to talk about a name, road name change?
Yes.
Okay.
My name is Johnny Brent. I don't live in Monroe, but my wife is from here and her whole family is from here. I stopped to congratulate the young man leaving because to me, what he's done is really something that is dear to me and I think is a significant accomplishment. I made Eagle Scout in 1968.
Congratulations.
And what I'm here for is my father-in-law, Reverend, I don't know, some of you might remember him, some of you might not, Reverend Alvin Jackson White, lived at 557 Green Street. Prior to that, he lived on Perry Street. My father-in-law and my mother-in-law, they built a house on, at 557 Green Street in 1964, and they raised five children in that home. And during his time living and working here in Monroe, he worked in the mill and several other places. But he was the pastor of Triumph, the church and kingdom of God and Christ. But he also organized one of the first African-American ministers associations here. And through their work, they supported the old Carver High School activities. And he served as counsel and mentor to a lot of young men and his wife to a lot of young men, women in this community. And in my associate, association with them, I married his daughter, Mary, in 1976 at Fort Seal, Oklahoma. I met her at Fort Valley State College. We have, we have a scholarship at Fort Valley State in the name of Reverend White and his wife to honor them. But because that area and Monroe was so, meant so much to him, and he did so much to try to help the community and help people grow. Like I say, I don't know if any of you are old enough to know him. Maybe some of your parents might. But that area, I think that's between Mayfield Drive and Carver Drive where his house sits. We're trying to maintain that area. The, the home will never leave the family. As a matter of fact, my son, he's be 43 years old next Friday, him and his wife and two kids live in the home. And we wanted to try to name if it's, if that street in his honor, if it's not the whole street, at least that, that block where his home sits. We want to keep his legacy going. The, like I said, the home site will never leave our family. And as a matter of fact, I have restored his old car and everything to put back over there. And that's what I'm here for, to find out what can I do to try to honor my father-in-law.
And what, and what is that address?
557 Green Street.
How many neighbors you have?
Across the, there's none on the same side of the street in that block that he lives on. His house is the only one there. Across the street, there's a couple of, there's two duplexes and I think two other houses going up toward the corner.
Okay. We'll look in, look into it. I'm going to, I'll get with Logan. David, did you have any legal?
I was just wondering, does anybody know what Green Street was named after? I don't.
I don't.
I don't know if that has any real historical significance or not, so.
I'm, I'm willing to research it.
That would, that would be good if you did. Also, I didn't know about this scholarship at Fort Valley State.
Yes.
That's one of the things that really needs to be, you know, advertised in this community.
We put it out to, to, my sister-in-law put it out to some, to the school, to Monroe Area High School this past year, that we had a scholarship there at Fort Valley State.
Well, if you'll take one of my cards, get in touch with me about it, because I'm very interested in that. My wife is originally from Fort Valley. And when she worked with the public school system here, she did a special programs thing. They took kids down to Fort Valley State during the summer because of the agricultural programs and the animal husbandry programs and all.
Garen, Garen Walker was student body president there?
No.
The name of Reverend Alvin Jackson White and Mother Irene White there. So that's, that's all I had.
Mr. Brent, I really like the idea. You two stay in touch. We'll look into it on our side.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Thank you for coming in. Ms. Hawkins?
Good evening.
Thank you for allowing me to speak today.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm very uncomfortable doing this. I want you to know.
That's quite all right. We're, we're pretty easy.
I wanted to, according to the thing, this is supposed to be the time to express your opinions and so forth.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I have some pretty strong opinions and I'm not sure you'll want to hear them, but I feel like I need to get it out.
Yes, ma'am.
Frankly, I am outraged at the increases in the rate of the water and electricity. Over 80% increase in the water. I didn't calculate the increase in electricity. Water and electricity are necessities. They're not luxuries. I cannot survive without them. The irony is this price gouging rates on water is that I choose to buy water for drinking and cooking because the taste of the city water is so bad. Sometimes it even smells bad and it is discolored slightly. So to add insult to injury, I'm almost doubling the cost just for water. On the electric side, I have stopped using central heat and air, unplugged the stove. I use a small little burner when I cook. The lights are off about 99% of the time. I use a refrigerator, a pot plate, very seldom, but I use it. And the TV is on. Occasionally, the lights are on, but they're off about 99% of the time. When temperatures plummeted into the teens and twenties and low thirties, I used a little miniature heater that I bought for less than a week in total. I'd also bought last year a little portable air conditioner that I use just to cool off the spot where I am and, and at night particularly so I can fall asleep. In other words, I believe I've done everything I can to possibly lower my cost, only to receive a bill that's double what it should be. By the way, I realized that this council, I just realized this when I was writing this up and reading this, it's just for the city only. I live outside the city limits. I have no representation for any voting, any cost increases, no representation. Isn't that what the Boston Tea Party was all about? Taxation without representation? So instead of just griping, I propose a solution. Turn your rate structure upside down. Let your corporate businesses, the big box stores mostly, pay the most instead of the least. And I mean double theirs. On the public side, try a scale based on income. For instance, most of you probably make over $100,000 a year. So this rate increase is
Uh, permits for the Code Office have increased, so have the inspections, so that's just kind of indicative of the springtime that's coming up. I did wanna mention though, the new projects for the city, they, they're definitely on the rise. Uh, we did have the Jack's Apartment Complex is fully complete, uh, now open and leasing. That project, as far as the city is concerned, is open and operating and, and complete at this juncture and the fully, um, certificate of occupancies have been all granted to all the buildings out there. Uh, the ones that have been recently final-platted, last year River's Edge, we haven't issued any permits on those. And Brooklyn Commons, uh, we've gone back to the drawing board with the developer, working on some of their building elevations and some issues on the site with them right now. Even though it is final-platted, um, they have not yet, uh, been able to pull building permits based on some, um, site issues out there that occurred after the final plat. So, uh, there's some potential, you know, homes that can be constructed in the city that are coming online. Did have two preliminary plats submitted this month for review for commercial projects, one at Tokyo and then one on the corner of Charlotte Rowell Boulevard and Highway eleven, uh, the A-four development. Uh, it's a Rowell property up there, it was previously approved for preliminary plat, expired and he resubmitted it for renewal. And then, um, there is a final plat under consideration that you will see in the coming months. Since first review now, it's for River Point, that is the large subdivision under construction on Cedar Ridge Road and Double Springs Road. The first phase of that development will be, um, considered. It's forty-eight lots is the first phase that you'll see, even though they have constructed nearly a majority of it at once. That was because some of their, uh, other infrastructure was dependent on this first phase getting complete. And then where our, our pre-application meetings continue to be highly sought after and, and are ongoing and I've got them scheduled out through the next month and a half. And we continue to receive many requests for those and there are other products that you will see in the near future, um, that will probably be of benefit to the city at some point, but we continue to get a lot of requests for new development, especially with the recent ordinance amendment that was passed, so we're seeing some requests for those, so, that's all that I have.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Calendar. Any questions for Brad? Mr. Wilson, thank you, Brad.
Good evening. I'll be brief, um, quick update on Hotel RFQ, nothing's really changed with that and we'll meet one more time before it officially closes, so I suspect we will have, uh, a more substantive update in June, uh, but not necessarily next month, um, but still just two intent to submit. Um, and I don't know if I mentioned this last month, cause I'm pretty sure it came in before our last meeting. If I did not, there was one, uh, official, uh, bid package submitted, so there is one that's already been turned in for the, for the project. So, um, that's a good thing and we expect to get at least one or two more. Social media, uh, that's gone up, but, you know, continues to go up every month. There's a little bit less of an increase than normal, but it's been kind of a slow month in terms of properties that have been posted. So about ten percent increase for this month and then, of course, Instagram was brand-new last month and continues to grow, uh, still slower than, than the Facebook part of it, uh, for sure. Uh, but we've got some properties that are out there, it's just working through getting the owners to give access and give details to get them posted and that sort of thing. There's a couple of things, Monroe Pizzeria, the old location is one of those, for instance, uh, that I've been in touch with the owner, Joe, and we just haven't gotten there yet, but we will. Um, but at any rate, uh, that, that should increase over the next month, I would, I would suspect. City and downtown business activities, so business license additions, there were nine, uh, two of those in the DDA. Number of jobs added were forty-eight total, seven of those in the DDA. Uh, and then deletions, uh, there were sixteen total. DDA have four, I'll double-check that, I, I, I think it may actually be three, but the number I had from, from Heather was, uh, was four. So, I'll, I'll double-check and make sure that's correct. But, uh, number of jobs lost officially in total was sixty-two and then in the DDA was thirty-three. But I'll say that with an asterisk because I think a lot of those were actually attributed to Monroe Pizzeria, which didn't go out of business, it actually merged with Will Henry's. So, it's still there and I'm not sure how that affected Will Henry's staffing, but at any rate, that, that, again, is the little caveat. So, that's all I have. If anybody has any questions, open for that now.
Anybody have any questions, Mr. Wilson? Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Ms. Thompson, finance?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, you have before you the finance report as of February, um, if you have any questions on it, I'll be glad to, um, answer those. The city was awarded a one million dollar redevelopment fund grant under the Community Development Block Grant Program, which is a CDBG through Georgia Department of Community Affairs. Um, we just received that this week. This will be used to eliminate blighted conditions to the historic old Ford Building, um, in downtown Monroe. Malden and Jenkins, our external auditors, are currently finishing up our annual audit and we hope to have that presented to you either next month or in June, um, by Malden and Jenkins. Um, and finally, I'm proud to announce that the city's finance department received three, um, GFOA awards. This is from the Government Finance Officers Association. We received the award for the twenty-three annual comprehensive financial report. This is the twenty-second year the city's received that. Um, we received the twenty-three popular annual financial report. This is the twentieth year the city received that one. And then just today, we received the, um, twenty-five budget document award, um, and this is the fourteenth year. When we receive all three, we get what is called the Triple Crown Award, so, um, we are proud to say that we got that again, so, um, hope to continue.
Congratulations, that's big.
And that's all I have.
Well, thank you, Beth. Are there any questions, Ms. Thompson? Chief Dykes?
Thank you, Mayor. Your packet before you has our instant statistics for the month of February, which at this point seems like it was so far away. But I would like to take a little bit of time to talk about what we've done in the, the past month. And the first thing was we had our annual awards banquet, and so I wanna take a minute and just brag on our awards recipients. So, during that banquet, we recognize, uh, our Rookie of the Year, Officer of the Year and Firefighter of the Year, which are voted on by our personnel. Our Rookie of the Year this year was Luke Morell. The funny part about this, he has about twelve years in the fire service, but only one year with us. So, he is, he is an old rookie, I guess is the best way to put that. Captain Matt Johnston was our Fire Officer of the Year and Austin White was our Firefighter of the Year recipient. And like I said, those were voted on by their peer group. Now, in addition to that, we allow each of our three battalion chiefs to award someone on their shift, what we call the Battalion Chief Award, and that's often to recognize those individuals that are your silent leaders or that are your behind-the-scenes actors that are doing things that maybe the rest of their crews aren't aware of, but are extremely valuable to the service we provide. And those this year were, uh, John Hall for A-shift, Josh, Josh Jameson on B-shift and Branson Oliver on C-shift. And so, we met on the twenty-fourth at Monroe Golf and Country Club and had a good time and a great banquet. Um, so definitely want to recognize those in, in public forum. Also, uh, some things coming up, we are having our next hazardous materials tech class hosted at GUTA. The first week of that will be, uh, April twenty-eighth through May second, then they'll take a week off and come back from May twelfth through sixteenth. Uh, that class has been so successful, I found it interesting, I was contacted by Gwinnett, uh, some officers from Gwinnett Fire a couple of weeks ago. They were inquiring about it because they are now going to send a few of their folks instead of sending them over to the Alabama Fire College because we're closer, more convenient and have a really good success rate. So, that's a huge plus. And then lastly, May first through September thirtieth will be the summer burn ban. And from my perspective, that can't come soon enough, based on how dry our March was. I believe we had ten outdoor fires in the city for the month, month of March, which is more than usual. Um, but that's one of those, if you see folks burning, starting May first, please let us know because that becomes, uh, a major issue and that is through forestry and EPD. We just go out and politely inform our residents of the burn laws and then assist them if needed in extinguishing those fires. Happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Are there any questions for Chief Dykes?
I was looking at the numbers, um, fire versus, uh, EMT. Are we good with EMT? Do we need, how are we doing on staffing? I'm looking at, at the future, uh, future next station.
Correct.
Are we gonna try to do that exactly the same or are we gonna have more staffing for EMTs?
So, as, as it stands right now, every one of our personnel has to be certified at least to emergency medical responder. Roughly half of our personnel are EMT or higher. Uh, but in order for that to be recog, for us to receive recognition, uh, we have to have, we're, we're basically gonna need three people per shift at that station. They will be medically trained. Ideally, in the long term, I would like to have everybody trained at EMT or higher. That comes with a cost of training and currently, oh, we'll add, we do have one opening at the mo, one full-time opening. One thing that we have encountered is that we've tried to limit the number of barriers to hiring and, and make our jobs as, um, easy to apply for. And so by not requiring everyone to be an EMT at the moment, the hope of that has been that we have cast a wider net to, uh, attract some folks. But yes, that, that is, that is a major component. If you look at the statistics from last night, uh, excuse me, last, not last month, for February, which is what's in your packet, sixty-one percent of the incident runs were emergency medical related. But that also includes wrecks where extrication, if needed, and those types of, uh, instances occur. So rescues are also included in that, but yes, that is a major component of what we do.
Thank you, appreciate it. Ms. Hanson, I'm gonna guess, captain?
Yes, sir.
Captain Hanson.
Yes.
Please, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Chief Watts is attending the Georgia Chiefs Conference this week, so I'll be sharing some of our numbers for the month. In February, officers answered two thousand seventy-nine calls for service, conducted eight hundred sixty-three traffic stops, performed over eleven thousand area checks, had eighty arrests, recovered six firearms and received over fifteen hours of training. And overall, in comparison to February of twenty-four, crimes against persons were down fifty-five percent and crimes against society were down twenty-five percent. So, that's all I have, unless you have questions.
That's outstanding. Are there any questions for the captain? Thank you. Solid waste, Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Got a couple of things, um, update on matches pickup. We picked up a hundred and thirty-eight in month of February. Uh, the good news is we, we're kinda closing that gap, uh, so we were able to build out a hundred and twenty-two for like over two thousand dollars, so, uh, twenty-three hundred dollars, but, um, we've, it seemed like we getting away from a lot of illegal dump sites. We still got some, uh, but these are just pretty much, uh, regular residents just kinda swapping out matches. So, we are closing the gap in that respect. Uh, and the only other thing I have is we wanna try to encourage customers to use the glass collection more. Uh, we, we averaging a little less than ten, ten tons a month, uh, but we do get, uh, rebates for, for the material and it also is weighted and we can keep it out of, out of the landfill. Uh, so we wanna, you know, encourage customers to use that service a little bit more. That's all I have.
Are there any questions for Mr. Smith? Thank you, Danny, nicely done. Uh, Mr. Still, streets and transportation?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Unless you have questions on the report, I'll be really quick with some stuff that we got coming down the line and what's been going on recently. Um, we're, we've done some significant paving around one of the new hangars out at the airport. And this really shaping up, it's gonna be really nice round through there. Uh, today, just as recent as today, we've, we've done, um, a couple loads of hot mix, taking care of some potholes and utility cuts, um, throughout the city. What I really wanna harp on tonight is, and I'll have it in front of you next month, is, um, the city's gonna benefit another quarter million dollars, uh, free money from the state. Uh, the local road assistance administration fund in the LRA, um, was something that was new to us last year. State has another surplus this year and our allotment based on lane mileage and the money given away throughout the state is just a little bit over a quarter million. It does not require a match, which is the best part. Um, so, we'll add that with the L-MIG money and probably look at four miles being paved this time around versus roughly two miles. So I'll have my recommendations and the application for approval, uh, for that next week, uh, next month, excuse me. And I'll be glad to entertain any questions on the report or that free money.
Are there any questions for Mr. Still? Jeremiah, the only one I have, um, in, in this mic, well, it would be for Rodney as well. Logan is here, you can jump in. Wayne Street, um, do we have a timeline on that?
Or the? Yeah, I mean, we're kinda, we're kinda waiting on the engineering to finalize. Um, I hope to be getting an update later this month from them on where that stands.
Okay. And we'll, and we'll try to knock all that out at the same time, right?
Yeah, for the most part, it's, um, it's a complicated project, even though it should just be a, a parking lot improvement. There's stormwater elements, uh, some electric, so on and so forth that goes along with it.
Okay. Thank you, uh, thank you, Jeremiah. Telecom and water, sewer, gas and electric, Mike?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. From the telecom side, uh, our GTC project, I know last month I said was nearing completion. It is actually completed now. We have verified that the, the routes and everything are good to go. Turned out all the information over to GTC. What that means for us is it gives us the ability to start exploring alternate routes for our data to flow through and increase bandwidth capacity, which we've started the process of looking into now. It's real excited about that. And part of that project, I'd, I'd come on board kinda in the middle, middle part of it, but part of that project too is, um, there was an agreement from the GT side that they, they were paying for the infrastructure and the bills, so we actually will be collecting a, a check from them for the build portion of that here very soon. So we've started that process as well. Since that project is done, we've been able to get back to doing fiber conversions and fiber installations now, now that our crews are back in full swing doing that. We had a really good month last month, um, had a, almost two hundred installs, which is almost twice as many as we normally do. And a hundred and seventy-four of those were either new, new customers or conversions on that. So we're currently sitting at about sixty-seven percent fiber and thirty-three percent cable. So we eked another two percent in each, each direction. So the next month or two, we should be at that seventy-thirty mark and it's, it's looking pretty good. We're just sitting just a little bit over, uh, getting, getting close to approaching the thirty-eight hundred, uh, customer mark there for fiber installations since we started this. So the area that went live this, this month was the Toller Street area. So the apartment complex down on the, on the end there, Toller Street and the Camp Town Garden Apartments, that's the first one on the right when you first go in there. We are working with their, uh, maintenance folks to, they are gonna do the pre-wiring for us, but they have started that negotiation with us as far as what can we do to help them to get that done. And so once that is completed, we'll check that box off and that whole area will be ready to go. But we've, we've already started installations out there. Um, we have also shut down our first, or we're getting ready to shut down our first official cable node. This is the very first official one that we will actually pull the plug on, on the thirtieth of this month. That'll be the Walker Drive node, so that'll be everything along Walker and down towards the end. There are not many customers left on there already as it is and, uh, we, we may just get them all off before we hit that deadline. But we've, we've notified them that they've got a deadline to meet for us and we're gonna be pulling the plug there and we've got more areas that are coming very soon. So we've literally started the physical decommissioning of our, of our RF plant, so I'm pretty excited about that part, so. And last but least, the Jack's, last month I told you we had done a lot of pre-wiring out there in the Jack's. Uh, building five hundred is the last building left, we'll start that tomorrow. Uh, David and his crew will be going out there and to get all the pre-wiring done. We've already tacked on about fifty customers out there and to my knowledge, we haven't had to roll the truck for one of them. They literally come in and sign them for service, they go home and they plug their stuff up and their service is good to go. So it's been great for us. So, and I think that's part of why we did so good this month is just the easy use for customers to get service from us out there. So, and the last thing I wanna say is special thanks to Todd Leachman and Perry Darley. Uh, I think it was last Thursday, we had a little bad, bad weather that came through. Here in Monroe, we did pretty good, but one of our major fiber lines, uh, outside of the city got tore down. Uh, I don't know if it was a little small microburst or tornado, something came through. I drive that road home, that road home every day and you literally can see it just out of nowhere, the tops of the trees are gone in this one little section. And it tore down about six spans of fiber and cable and everything that's down there. And they, they literally were punching out that day at three-thirty to go home and got the call and before I even knew what was going on, they, they loaded up with the contractors, went out there and, and got home almost close to midnight that night. So just my hats off to those guys and the hard work that they put. I know it's part of our job, it's what we do, but sometimes I, I think folks don't really get to see what they do, uh, after hours and when, when storms and stuff come through. And if anybody has any questions, I'll be, I'll be glad to answer them.
Do you wanna have any questions for Mike?
From the telecom side.
And back to you, thank you, Mike, for, for?
And then Rodney, he's at a, he's at a, a conference, but he just gave me a couple of bullet points to, to highlight for the council here real quick. Um, the gas, uh, project out there at the River Point subdivision off Cedar Ridge, which telecom also joint-trenched with them, so we laid our, our conduit in the ground while they put the, the gas in. That has been completed now. Uh, the steel main replacement along Road, Road has also been completed now. Uh, there is a sixteen-inch water main, transmission main from the There is a 16-inch water main, transmission main from the water plant to the tank site. Rodney said that the, the crews will be getting, starting that tomorrow. The 24-inch raw water project that he has, two or three of the bores have been completed. The third bore goes under Highway 78. That will start this week. And last, their tennis project, which you're doing for automatic meter reading, they currently have 300 meters now that have been installed, and they've just placed an additional order, I believe he said, for another 1,200 this month to be, to be installed and put out there. And if you have any questions, I'll be sure to ask Rodney.
So are there any questions for Mr. McGuire about anything? Thank you, Mike.
All right, no problem.
Moving to department requests, Mr. Bailey?
Thank you, sir. This is a simple request for the surplus and disposal of the assets that will be on the next page. There's what, approximately a dozen or so old vehicles that we either are replacing or just completely disposing of.
Are there any questions for Chris? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Gregory. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Brown. Thank you. Is there any discussion? All in favor, see it by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith, Great American Cleanup Week, April 21 through 25.
Thank you, Mayor. We're asking designate the week of April 21 through 25, participate in the Great American Cleanup Week. We've been doing this since 2002. We allow citizens to come into our transfer station and dump at no charge trash, garbage, anything to help them clean up, do their spring cleaning. We do allow tin tires, that's the limit. Unfortunately, we will not be taking mattresses. No mattresses. And this is for residents only, and also no businesses. But, but we will be, we'll be open that week for anybody to just come in and help to clean up. And it helps keep it off the curb too, so we can just matriculate, you know, our regular service. But, so we just ask for that week to participate.
That sounds perfect. Are there any questions for Mr. Smith? Thank you, Danny. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Mr. Dickinson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Crawford. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. I'm moving to the public hearing for the Urban Redevelopment Agency Plan Amendment. Mr. Wright?
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Before you, as a resolution to amend your urban redevelopment plan, the city implemented its plan back in 2008 and updated it in 2018. So this will be the second amendment to it. And it's brief. You'll be updating the map that is retained in the plan. If you want specifics on exactly what the difference in the map is, and I will defer to Mr. Callender. That would be Section 3.1 of your plan, and you will be adding a Section 6.3.2, which kind of sets aside or purposes a 1.72 acre tract over on Davis Street to build a very nice hotel for this city, provided we make that work. So that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. Are there any questions for Donnie or Brad? Hearing none. And I, and I really don't know the way on the resolution because we waived the reading. Is it automatic now? Are you okay with waiving the reading?
I think the reading is now automatically waived unless someone asks for it to be waived.
Just wanted to cover my bases.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you. That's a, that's a public hearing, so I'm sorry, I'll declare this portion of the meeting open for the purpose of public input. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak in favor of the Urban Redevelopment Agency Plan Amendment? Is there anyone here who'd like to speak against the Urban Redevelopment Agency Amendment? Hearing none, I'll declare that portion of the meeting closed, and we will revisit that almost immediately under new business. This is the Urban Redevelopment Plan Agency Amendment. And you just discussed it, so did anybody have any questions about it before I asked for a motion? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to adopt the amendment.
I have a motion to approve or adopt by Mr. Dickinson. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Gregory. Is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to district items. Ms. Malcolm, do you have anything?
No, not at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crawford.
Really, I, I too got a lot of calls and texts, one about the statues. At first, it was, just want to know what it was. Then the next, the texts, emails, stops in the stores. Then the people was upset about raising rates, and now we purchasing statues, just a lot of them was upset. So I did get the calls and emails about the statues as well.
Okay. I was going to address the statues and have online, but the statues were paid for partially with a donation from the Uleleya Group. The, I believe we had 28,000 remaining that was paid for through the hotel motel tax that has to be spent on tourism and marketing. It can't be spent on anything else, and that's as dedicated by Convention and Visitors Bureau. So it came out of nobody's property taxes. Some folks like it, some folks don't. But, but yeah, that's no property tax.
And they are a loan.
Yes, ma'am. They're on loan for 12 months, and the CVB may want to do something further next year, but that is, that's a standalone.
Mr. Mayor, to follow up on what Ms. Crawford was saying, we've talked about this before. The city just has to do a better job of communicating on the front end because I got some of those contacts about why are my tax dollars being used for this? And of course, I explained to folks how it works. Then they're, okay, I didn't understand that. I thought, you know, it was coming out of the tax, general tax money. We've just got to do a better job of educating folks on the front end so that those things never get started. I think the vast majority of people love the statues. The concern was, considering what's going on in our general economy right now, I don't know if y'all keep up with that, but we're in an economic disaster due to what I think is just economic illiteracy on the national level. And it makes people real concerned because they're losing a lot.
Right.
Out there. And we've, we've just got to communicate better about these kind of things.
On the, on the front end, and I agree, I agree with both of you. And we will, we will do better.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Brown?
I just wanted to say about the statues, I did get some emails, I did educate some people about the hotel motel tax. But I also had some friends to come in town over the weekend, and I drove them around to see them, and they really enjoyed it. And, you know, they want to come back, you know, before they're gone. So we've been really enjoying it, and it, you know, is a showstopper.
Right.
They said that they are done very, very nicely, so.
What's your favorite? What's your favorite?
My favorite is the cop on the corner. Everybody stops for him, so.
What's your, what's your favorite, Ms. Crawford?
I think the checkers, because they're so real.
Yeah, they are, they are lifelike.
Yes, they are.
Mr. Gregory?
Same for me with the statues, but again, once I'll do a little explanation, people understand. I think they're great. I do, it'd be great at some point if we could look at getting some local artists involved as well, something that, that is similar. I don't know what that looks like, but I'd love to see that. And so would some other folks who, who wrote me. But I just want to say thanks for taking the initiative for DDA and the Uleleya Group, and thanks for everything that the city continues to do. Appreciate you.
And what was your favorite?
Oh, my favorite is, is that what you were asking me in general? Sorry. My favorite is the guy playing guitar out at the green, who almost got it.
Yes, he dodged.
Yeah.
He dodged, dodged that vehicle.
I assumed when I saw that that people were like, a concert! You know, and just...
Let's run over them.
Yeah.
Um, Mr. Dickinson?
I've already said it.
You got a favorite?
Oh, the favorite, the cop.
I'm, I'm torn. I like the, I like the library and the umbrella. Those are mine. Those are mine, too. Merrill update. Are we all set for Savannah with classes and hotels? You've all gotten with Caitlin? Okay. Car show, everybody who was involved, from, from in-house staff and employees to employees who volunteered for the day. I don't really think we ever do anything that doesn't have Amy Hammond throwing her hands and, and helping. I mean, just some wonderful folks, so I appreciate you doing that. There are three of us in town who are celebrating the University of Florida's National Championship last night, so I'm not going to let that go without congratulating those two other people and me and myself.